Common Council for Monday, August 24th, 2020. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We do this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice per all.
Katrina, you want to say a prayer?
Lord, eternal God, our Father, who has been with us since the birth of our children, who will continue to cover our city, who will be the leaders of your people, and who will God continue to cover each and every resident that is in this city, who will be every child that has gone back to school, be it in learning or being in person, Lord, we thank you for all these things that we do. In your precious name, we do. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Carmen Roca.
Alexander. Alexander.
She said here.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kelwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakos.
Here.
Warple.
Here. Let the record show nine present, zero absent, two are actually in chambers, and seven by electronically. Mayor, did you want to speak to the council on COVID or anything before we get started? Pardon me? Sorry, I didn't mean to catch up, guys. You're used to it.
That's all right. I don't have anything prepared unless the council has questions about anything. I could tell you that today I met with the U.S. Marshal for the Northern District of Indiana. Him and I toured the Hammond City Jail, which has been recently renovated with like thirty more cells. I'm going off the top of my head, but so hopefully we'll be able to store federal prisoners, which is sort of a lucrative business. We could probably make another quarter to half a million dollars because of the renovations we've done, but the U.S. Marshal was real happy with that. I know we're wrapping up the $500 rebate program through the Hammond Sanitary District at this point. I think at this point, almost 1,300 checks have gone out. I think there was right around 1,700 total claims, which is, I think, runs around $750,000 right there. I don't know if the council has any questions, but we could go through the rest of the meeting. I'm here, so.
Did anybody have any questions as far as what he's brought up?
Mr. President, I do have one thing I want to bring up. I know that recently the Hammond Council passed a tax anticipation warrant of $12 million, which we appreciate. I want to report to the council that as of this point, we haven't hit one penny of that tax anticipation warrant. We haven't used one penny. And after speaking with the city controller, we're hoping that we can get through 2020 without actually tapping a single penny of that tax anticipation warrant, which is nice. The casino boats are doing a little bit better. You know, I mean, not really that great. It's down 50% at least year over year, but they are open right now. They are generating money. We did get a pretty good tax draw, so people are paying their property tax bills. So at this point, assuming, you know, things continue the way they are, and we don't have any shutdown, I think we'll get through the rest of this year without having to tap any of that tax anticipation warrant, which is nice, but it's there just in case of an emergency. I thought that was an interesting thing to point out to the council.
Thank you.
I don't know if you have any questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
Mayor, does that carry over, like stay in the rainy?
Good question. Well, no, no, we haven't. We could pull from it, but we'd have to. Tax anticipation warrants are very short term in nature, so we wouldn't pull from it and keep it. It's just there. It's like a home equity loan. You know, you tap it if you need it. If you don't, it's there, right?
Give it back.
Which is nice. So if we came up short, we couldn't make payroll for some reason because maybe the, you know, we didn't get the property tax draw or something like that, we know that we have it there in case of an emergency. Thanks, Mr. Councilman Torres.
Any further questions?
All right. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number three, reading of the minutes.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Take a motion to accept the minutes from August 17th, 2020, and be placed on file, please.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali. Was it seconded by Councilman Emerson? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number four, approval of minutes, or claims, I'm sorry, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
Make the motion, we play a claim, pay claims for August 5th, 2020 to August 19th, 2020, claims 3724 to 3898, in the amount of $4,700, $4,799,938.88.
Second.
Motion's been made to approve the claims, as Councilman Rakos said, by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Janet Vines. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Vines, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Carmen Roca.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Oh.
Was that a no?
No.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show.
Mr. President. Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I, yes, I think this is probably the third meeting out of the last four that Councilman Kelwinski has voted no on the claims. And I'm just curious, generally, if there's a no vote on the claims, it's explained why there, perhaps there was a particular claim that he was in disagreement with. I'm just curious why he's voting no.
Councilwoman Vines, that's addressed to the Chair. Councilman Kelwinski, would you care to respond?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kelwinski.
When I review the claims, the engineering that's citywide seems to be exorbitant to me, so I vote no because of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Let the record show eight in favor, zero opposed. Number five, public hearings. There are none. Number six, communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I want to announce that the Food Bank of Northwest Indiana will once again be hosting a mobile food pantry. It was scheduled to take place at local 1010 tomorrow, but that that location has moved, so it'll be taking place at the Sportsplex at 11:00 a.m. tomorrow, Tuesday, August 25th. So once again, the Food Bank of Northwest Indiana is hosting another mobile food pantry in the city of Hammond at the Hammond Sportsplex on Tuesday, August 25th at 11:00 a.m. Along with that, want to also announce again that Hammond, Hammond homeowners are encouraged to apply for the 2020 flood protection program. The sanitary district will contribute up to 50% of the cost to install the appropriate flood protection device, the maximum contribution of $1,000 per household. I don't believe that there is a application deadline for that, but if they are interested, they should call Caitlin Sherman at 853-6413, extension 515. Also want to announce that the Dowling Park Fishing Derby hosted by Mayor Thomas M. McDermott and the Parks Department will be taking place this Saturday, August 29th, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00, right next to the Genius Shepherd Center. The Autumn Colors Craft Show still needs vendors. You have until August 31st to sign up at the discounted price of $45. The Autumn Colors Craft Show will take place on October, Saturday, October 3rd, from 10:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. at the Civic Center. And if you are interested in being a vendor for that, you can contact Selena at 219-853-7705. And then lastly, the Hammond Parks Department and the Hammond Public Library are collaborating to host the movie night on September 19th, 2020, at Calley Park Athletic Complex. They're going to be showing Miss Peregrine's Home for Peculiar Children. Doors open at 7:00 p.m. and the movie starts at 7:30. There will also be concessions. If you have any questions about that, you can call 219-853-7705, or 219-931-5100, extension 330. Thank you.
Thank you, man. Councilman Tyler. Does anybody else have any communications? Is that Councilwoman Alexander?
I just want to go back to that, the, regarding, eight in favor and zero opposed, it's eight to one, it's eight in favor, zero to one opposed. Thank you. I just wanted to correct what you had said.
I thought I said eight in favor and one opposed. That's fine, though. Thank you. Is there any other communications? Is there any other communications? Communications are now closed. Item number seven, committee reports, just as a financial committee, the mayor already brought it up about the not having to use the tax anticipation warrant, and with any kind of luck, we won't. But are there any other communications? I mean, I'm sorry, committee reports?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I, yes. A couple of weeks ago, or I believe at the last council meeting, I announced that there was going to be a virtual crime watch meeting on August 27th. That meeting has been postponed, and I will advise that a later date. Coming up on Thursday, September 10th, is the Whiting Roberts Dale Crime Watch. That will be at Calumet College at 6:30 p.m. That is on a first come, first served basis to provide for social distancing. Coming up on September 24th, the South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch will meet at Trinity Lutheran Church on the corner of 173rd and Holman, beginning at 6:30 p.m. And as crime watches become available, I will certainly let everyone know, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vines. Are there any other community reports? Are there any other committee reports? Community reports are now closed. Ordinances, third and final passage, there are none. Introduction of ordinances.
2012, an ordinance amending ordinances, 7685, 8200, 8565, 8630, 8645, 8718, 8754, 8755, 8854, 8930, 9017, 9061, 9194, 9252, 9359, 9375, and 9462. Also known as section 36.005b and c of the Hammond Municipal Code, as it pertains to expenditures of gaming revenue.
Mr. Chairman.
Sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, Councilman Spitali, and Councilman Tyler.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes. I move for first and second reading of 20-12, with a committee meeting scheduled on Monday, September 14th at 4:00 p.m.
Second.
Motion's been made for first and second reading with a committee meeting held on Monday. What was that date?
September 14th.
September 14th at 4:00 p.m. Motion was made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry. The committee would be council as a whole.
Yes, that is correct. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay, now is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kelwinski.
Thank you, sir. It's my belief that we don't need a redistribution ordinance of gaming funds. Instead, I propose the Hammond City Council or the administration hire an outside source to review the general budget and all budgets, and propose cuts to balance the budgets. Being a responsible elected official is not for the faint of heart. We're in a crisis, and we need to be responsible, knowledgeable, dedicated, careful, diligent, and thorough. What's the word for someone who doesn't want to make the tough decisions? Whatever it is, that's the name of this ordinance, and I don't want to be known by that name. We didn't make enough tough decisions in the past to deal with the 1, 2, 3 tax caps and other budget issues. Instead, funding entertainment and sports venues and other nice, feel-good, but non-essential amenities. We tweaked a few things, used some casino money, and kicked the can down the road. Now, between the full effect of tax caps and the COVID crisis, we're at the dead end of that road. Voting for this ordinance is unconscionable and irresponsible. The original Empress Casino in Hammond opened June 29th, 1996, over 24 years ago. At that time, there was opposition, especially from the north end of the city, which would be most affected. To try to pacify opposition, residents were told that the gaming dollars would provide Hammond with the very best streets, roads, sidewalks, lighting, water, and sewer systems. And so, the ordinance was established by the Hammond City Council of the approximately $35 million of revenue from gaming. 10% would go to each district, which would be about 3.5 billion. The shared 10% fund for larger projects would receive 3.5 billion, and the mayor would receive 30% or 10.5 billion. Here we are, 24 years later, and there are still broken sidewalks, crumbled or non-existent curbs, smoke streets, potholes, and basements flooding after a storm. For at least the last 10 years, district casino dollars were used to balance the budget. From 1/3 to 2/3 of those funds were used to balance the general fund. Now, this ordinance allows 14 reductions to the gaming dollars before any funds are distributed for infrastructure or district projects. And the last item of reduction, labeled N, like Nancy, general fund transfer in an amount appropriate to properly fund the city budget. The original ordinance stipulated never to use the gaming dollars for the general budget. I'm asking the council to consider tabling this ordinance for now, to really have us all scour seriously, to make the tough.
Motion's been made to table. That ends discussion. Carmen roll call.
Alexander.
It needs a second. It needs a second. I'm sorry.
They had a second, right?
There's been a motion made to table. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made to table, seconded by Councilman Tyler. Roll call.
Alexander. Spitali. Vines.
No.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
No.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Could you repeat that, Councilman Emerson?
Yes.
It's a yes.
Rakos.
No.
Warple.
No. Let the record show, motion fails. Six, or three in favor, six opposed. Now, on the original motion to, for pass on first and second reading, assigned to council as a whole on September 14th at 4:00 p.m., it's been properly introduced and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman.
Is that an in-person committee meeting, or partial, virtual, and in-person?
Everybody has the opportunity to come to our meetings as it is, Councilman. I can't force them to come. I mean, if that's what you are suggesting, we can.
Okay, but it's.
Our committee, I mean, our council as a whole can meet safely.
Okay, so committee meetings are in-person. Okay.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kelwinski.
With this ordinance being of such significance, with so many dollars involved, I would request that a public hearing would also be scheduled, so that the public can come or Zoom to give their input about losing dollars in the districts for infrastructure. Thank you. So that's a motion for a public hearing, I guess.
I'm going to defer to our attorney, Attorney Berger. Do we need a public hearing?
He's on mute.
Pardon me? He's got to unmute.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, a public hearing is not necessary, but it's permissible.
Thank you, Attorney Berger. The public hearing's not necessary. The motion's been made, committee hearing, for pass on first and second reading with a committee hearing on September 14th at 4:00 p.m. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kelwinski.
Although it's not necessary, it is permissible, and it is a way of being transparent and getting the public involved regarding an ordinance of this stature. So I'm requesting that a public hearing be scheduled.
It's.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, when does the councilman propose to have a public hearing?
Well, it would be nice for that to happen somewhere when COVID wasn't keeping people away from City Hall. So two weeks seems too quick. I would say we ought to give this some time for the public to become aware and for things to be safer, so more people can come to respond at a public hearing in person. I know that they can right now, but I know a lot of people are not floating around like they usually do. So we're trying to be fully transparent. I'm requesting a public hearing down the road, maybe in a month. We look at this and have a public hearing and see if things are better and we can get a good turnout, because this is an important issue, and I think people want to be heard. And I think we ought to be transparent.
Mr. President.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Councilman Kelwinski, are you making a motion for a public hearing?
I am.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion's been made by Councilman Kelwinski, seconded by Councilwoman Alexander for a public hearing. Again, I want to remind everybody, this is first and second reading, and we're going to have a committee hearing that we could discuss these issues in, but the motion's been made and seconded. Carmen roll call.
Mr. President.
I'm sorry, is there any discussion on the motion? Councilman, Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, yes, um, uh, if a councilman wants a public hearing, then I, I would like to suggest that we have a public hearing on September 14th.
The motion's already been made for the public hearing. Mayor, is there any further discussion? The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on that motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, one of the features of this ordinance is that there will be public involvement in decisions being made with regard to projects. The committee that, that will meet to make decisions on what projects that will be moved forward on, the public is going to be involved in those. They're going to be able to come and voice their opinion and let, let the Capital Improvements Board know what, what projects they would like to see done. So I don't necessarily know that a public, I beg your pardon.
Point of order. We're, we're doing a motion on the vote. We're not filibustering at this point. This is just a motion. He's already gone through the steps, and now we're voting.
I, I understand that he called for discussion. He called for discussion, and my, my discussion is relative to the motion.
I, I would want to remind both of you to address the Chair, number one. Number two, the motion's been, the motion's been made and seconded to have a public hearing. I guess Councilwoman Vines is asking for that public hearing on September 14th.
Mr. Chairman.
If I understand correctly. Councilman Kelwinski.
I think we're ordering, we're, we're voting on one thing at a time here, so I think what we're voting on now is a public hearing. If you want to have another motion or a date for the public hearing, that should come up as a separate motion. Thank you.
That would be an amendment to the motion, Councilman.
Yes, sir.
I guess Councilwoman Vines has made the amendment to the motion for the public hearing to be on September 14th.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
That is correct. Thank you.
That's, that's a separate, that's a separate motion.
Mr. President.
Go twice here.
Councilman, Councilman Emerson, did you say something?
Councilman Rakos, I believe.
I can't.
Mr. Chairman, can we ask Attorney Berger on the correct protocol here?
Attorney Berger. The motion's been made for an unspecified public hearing. Councilwoman Vines is amending the motion to have the meeting, the public hearing on September 14th. Councilman, Councilman Kelwinski has a question for you.
It weren't amended, there could be a separate motion, but I think amendment is a proper procedure.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kelwinski.
I'd like to propose that the public hearing be on September 28th.
On what day?
September 28th, two weeks later.
Well, we already got Councilwoman Vines's motion. We can't have two motions, so we, I guess we have to vote on Councilwoman Vines's amendment.
And therefore is the dilemma, Mr. Chairman. People who want to vote for the public hearing, that's one matter. People who want to vote for a date is another. Consequently, asking for two votes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
We're talking about an amendment to an amendment now. Why would we assign a public hearing for an ordinance and not give a date? That doesn't make any sense. That's why Councilwoman Vines tried to establish a date. Should have been a date with the original, with the original motion, which is an amendment to our ordinance on first and second reading. I don't, I don't understand. Why would we have, why would we vote on having a hearing after we're going to vote? We've actually done that before, though. After we're going to vote on the ordinance. Why would we do that? That makes no sense at all.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Rakos said it himself, we've done it before. However. Chair can move forward.
The motion has been made and seconded for a public hearing, and Councilwoman Vines has made a motion for the public hearing to be on Septem, I mean, an amendment to that motion, for the public hearing to be on September 14th. So Carmen roll call on the amendment to the motion. Carmen roll call on the amendment to the motion to amend, Councilwoman Vines has amended Councilman Kelwinski's motion. Is there a second for the September 14th?
Second.
Who's second? Who seconded it?
Katrina. Councilwoman Katrina.
Councilman Spitali?
Councilwoman Katrina.
Councilwoman Alexander is seconded the motion to amend the meeting to be on September fourteenth. Carmen Roca.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
No.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson. Emerson.
It's a yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes. Let the record show, the amendment to the original motion to have the meeting, or the, a public hearing on September fourteenth passes. Eight in favor, one opposed. Now the amended motion for the public hearing.
Alexander.
Ms. Park, yes.
Spitali.
Ms. Brayston.
Uh, was that again, Mr. President?
We're making the motion to have the meeting on, and a public hearing on September fourteenth as amended by Councilwoman Vanez.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson. Rakos.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes. Let the record show, there will be a public hearing scheduled for September fourteenth on this ordinance. Now back to the original motion for first and second reading, council as a whole, September fourteenth at 4:00 p.m. With a public hearing scheduled for September fourteenth that night.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
No.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson. Rakos.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes. Let the record show, eight in favor, one opposed for putting it in first and second reading with the committee hearings as proposed.
Mr. President, what time is the, um, public hearing for that?
It'll be, uh, during, under public expression, I mean, I'm sorry, under public hearings.
You're talking about the one you just voted on?
It'll fall there. It'll be September fourteenth. It'll be item number.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
That concludes introduction of ordinances. Resolutions, there are none. New and unfinished business.
President.
Who was that?
Councilwoman Alexander.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Um, I just want to give a COVID update. From August twelve to August twenty-fourth, according to code of four six three two oh, um, we have twenty-four new cases for four six three two seven. We have twenty-six new cases for four six three two four. We have forty-three new cases. For four six three two three, we have fifty new cases. And for four six three nine four, we have twenty-seven new cases, with a hundred and seventy new cases, the date from August twelve to August twenty-fourth. I would just like to remind the public that you can get COVID testing at Morton High School from August twenty-fifth to August twenty-ninth, from nine a.m. to six p.m. Wear your masks. While you're not wearing your mask, you're actually helping to infect them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman?
Yes.
Was that, uh, three two four?
Four six three two four is forty-three new cases.
Forty-three. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, Council. I just want to remind everyone to please mask up, continue to wash your hands, continue to sanitize, and remember while you're not wearing your mask, you're actually infecting those that are wearing a mask. So, uh, I just wanted to remind the public so that we can do what's right, so we can hurry up and try to get out of this pandemic.
Thank you. Is there any other new and unfinished business? Is there any other new and unfinished business? Um, I want to just clarify one thing that was said about that ordinance, and there is nowhere in that ordinance does it say anything about us not giving money for projects. It's just a different way of redistributing the money. Is there any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed. Public expression, mayor?
Councilwoman Whorple, I'm here to answer any questions about that ordinance if you have it.
Would anybody have?
I didn't want to get up during the disagreement with the council, so I just stood back while you guys worked out the details on the public hearing. And, um, I'm here to answer any questions anybody has. I've talked to just about everybody on the council in regards to this ordinance. And I agree with Councilwoman Whorple. It's probably the way we should have been doing business from the get-go, because what we do now is give ten percent to be spent by the district councilmen unfettered. If they want to do it all on park projects or lighting projects or just the top coat of their streets, they could do it because they have unfettered access to that ten percent. This system that we're talking about with the Capital Improvement Board will be a seven-member board chaired by the city engineer, three members appointed by the council, three other members appointed by the mayor, and that seven-member board will decide where sixty-two percent of the gaming money is spent. And using that scenario, I, I always bring up, uh, the third district, and I said to Councilman Tyler when I spoke to him, if Tapper needed to get done, and it was a seven million dollar project from end to end, and Councilman Tyler needed to get Tapper done, it would take him four or five years under the current proposal to get Tapper done under the way we do business currently. Under the way we're talking about doing business, Tapper could get done in one season, two seasons max. And that's what we're talking about, is concentrating money where it needs it so that we do what's good for the city, not what's good for the local councilperson. No offense to the local councilpeople, and the mayor included, but we have great lighting projects across the city. We've got great looking parks. We need to start spending money underneath the asphalt, and that's what this proposal does. And I understand why district councilman would be threatened by this, by Councilman Kowinski. I understand why he'd be threatened by this because it takes away the unfettered access he has to the first district money, and it puts it through a seven-member panel that decides what's best for the city based on grades assigned by the city engineer, the need of the city, the number of people affected.
Mayor, just to clarify, because this was brought up, the way it is currently, the public has no say-so in projects.
Absolutely none. Right now, you give, this year, we give one point five million dollars to the district councilperson, and they could do whatever they want. Even the city engineer says, you know, I think in the fifth district, you should work on the service road south of eighty-nine-four, and Councilman Whorple has the right to say, no, we're not going to do that, even though the city engineer thinks it's important. I'm going to do this project instead. That's the way we've done it since nineteen ninety-six. And in nineteen ninety-six, when each district councilperson was getting over three million dollars, it was a lot more feasible than it is nowadays when we get one point five million. And let me remind you, in the, during this term that we're all sitting in, Chicago's going to open up two more casinos, and Gary's going to open up one, which means the dollars we have this year aren't going up. They're not. So we need to figure out how to concentrate that money on the projects that are most pertinent to the city, and that's what this proposal talks about. It also codifies the game, what was formerly referred to as the mayor's gaming advisory board. This is an advisory board that's chaired by the mayor's chief of staff, who's Phil Taylor on right now, five mayor, uh, five appointees from the, from the community appointed by the mayor, five members of the community appointed by the council, and those eleven members would spend four percent of the gaming revenue. That's about seven hundred thousand dollars. And they would give it to not-for-profits across the city, schools, YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, things like that. Councilman Kowinski, about three meetings ago, brought up the need for a, a rainy day fund. And we do have one, but we took that. Councilman Tyler also brought up the need for a rainy day fund. We built that into this ordinance. It, it says we're going to have four percent of our gaming revenue put into a rainy day fund, and it will not be touched. It's just going to go off to the side. Something we could have done a long time ago, and we didn't. We're talking about doing that in this ordinance. There still will be gaming money going to the local district councilman. There still will be some gaming money going to the mayor, but most of the money is going to go to the capital improvement boards, that seven-member board that will decide where and what projects are being spent on. I understand why district councilman would be threatened by it. And quite frankly, keep in mind, the mayor, I get thirty percent right now of the gaming revenue, and I'm going down to fifteen percent. So I'm giving up some of the money that I get as mayor of the city as well. We're talking about giving it to a seven-member board and letting them do what they think is in the best interest of the city.
In the scenario I'm describing, we're all aware, I know the city engineer is, I have an ongoing problem with Schneider Street.
Right.
And I have a resident that calls me three days a week. And this resident now will be able to go in front of that board, and it's not going to be like they're going to be meeting in private. It's not going to be like I tell him, uh, you know what, I want to trim some trees in my district this year, so sorry, I can't fix your street. He's going to be able to direct his complaint directly to the board, correct?
Yes, sir. We set up the meetings. There'll be two a month opposite the city council meeting. They'll be right here in the council chamber. They'll be on Go Hammond Live, like, like the city council meetings are. The minutes will be recorded by the Hammond City Clerk. There will be public expression in those meetings, and Dean will be sitting in your chair, Dean, the city engineer. Whoever the city engineer is, will be sitting in that chair, chairing the meeting, seven-member board. They will, this is going to be a busy board. They're going to have a lot of projects that are competing for limited gaming revenue, just like the district council people face. But this proposal is a good proposal. Quite frankly, I wish we'd done this twenty-four years ago, and we'd be a lot different city right now had we done it. And Hammond, Indiana is the only city in Indiana safely, in the United States of America, where district council people have ten percent of the gaming money. That's it. Hammond. Okay? It's not supposed, the council is not supposed to spend money. It's supposed to appropriate money to be spent by the executive branch. But this is a deal that City Hammond entered into in nineteen ninety-six, and we've been following it since then. It's not working anymore. We need to change it, and that's what this proposal is calling for.
Does anybody have any questions for the mayor?
Mr. Chairman, I have a request or comment.
Councilman Kowinski.
To get a clearer perspective of how this ordinance might play out, is it possible to plug in twenty-twenty numbers into the proposed budget to see the outlay of money, where it goes, and how that might look?
Yes, sir.
Not that it's going to be totally accurate.
Absolutely, Councilman Mark.
That's a way to get a look at things, to see.
Yes, sir.
Where money will fall.
Yes, sir.
How much goes to adding the general budget?
I would absolutely agree, Councilman Mark. We have those numbers ourselves. In the ordinance, we didn't build those numbers because, A, twenty-twenty numbers were projected in twenty nineteen, and in twenty nineteen, when we projected twenty-twenty gaming numbers, we had no idea we were going to be in a pandemic. But I agree with Councilman Mark that using twenty-twenty numbers in this ordinance for like a, like a worksheet is smart. Is that what, would that be satisfactory, Councilman Mark?
I think, uh, I think we're thinking the same thing.
No problem.
Like, to each point in the ordinance, how much money in twenty-twenty goes out to it.
Yes, sir. Totally agree.
I think it'll give us a sense of what's left for the districts.
Yes, sir. We have those numbers, Mark. We have those numbers. We, I didn't mean to talk over you, Councilman. I apologize. We have those numbers, Councilman Mark. They're not in the budget, they're not in the ordinance because those numbers change year to year. But we could easily do that, Councilman Mark, and we will get that information to you right away, okay?
Appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you.
And by the way, I understand why Councilman Mark is reluctant. I get that. This is a big deal. Councilman Mark and I have both been on the Hammond, Councilman Mark's been on the Hammond City Council at the end of this term for twenty years, and at the end of this term, I'll be mayor for twenty years. This is something that we've been operating by for our entire careers in public office. I understand why Councilman Mark has a lot of questions. I don't blame him a bit. Okay? Councilman Mark, I will get that to you right away.
Thank you, sir.
As well as to the rest of the council.
And just my final comment, because public expression is actually closed. You're allowed to speak anytime you want.
Thank you.
We'll just adjourn after this. But my final comment is, when you're standing in flooded basements, and it's a two and a half million dollar fix, and we don't get enough money to fix it, that's why I support this ordinance.
Yes, sir. I agree. And at the end of this ordinance, assuming and hoping that it passes, we'll have a capital improvements board where the council has three members sitting on it out of seven. That's how boards work. The council knows it as well as I do, but I want the public to know that's how boards work in government. The mayor has three appointments, the council has two. The mayor has four appointments, the council has three. This board will be just like that. We'll also have a board for the nonprofit gaming advisory committee that the out-large council people take place in. That'll be created. The, the rainy day fund will be created as well, and district councilman and the mayor will still get a portion of the gaming revenue at the end of this, if this ordinance passes.
And yet, Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Kowinski.
Regarding the distribution of the appointments, the condo is holding on to about twenty-one million if you look at how the council, uh, the ordinance was pre, was written in ninety-six. And the mayor is holding about ten million. So it seems like the lion's share of the money is the council's, yet the mayor is going to have the deciding vote on projects because he's the mayor. There's, I'm conflicted about that. Just wanted to let that out there.
Well, Mr. President, in response to Councilman Kowinski's concern, could I speak?
Go ahead.
The residents of Hammond elected Tom McDermott the mayor of the city. I'm the mayor for the next three and a half years, and if the county, and if the residents don't think I'm doing a good job, I'll be, I'll be replaced. But one of the problems that this ordinance created twenty-four years ago is it creates a mayor, myself, and six other mini-mayors for their district. So, for instance, we were talking about this today at lunch. If we wanted to do a bike trail, uh, from the fifth district all the way to downtown Hammond, you have to go through three council districts to get to downtown Hammond. So theoretically, Councilman Whorple could say, yes, I want to participate in that. And then the third district councilman, and I'm not saying Barry wouldn't participate, I'm using it as an example, third district councilman could say, no, that's not important to me. And the second district councilman could say, yes, that's important to me. So we would have a bike trail through the fifth that was brand new. We'd go across the bike trail in the third district, and it'd be old and pothole ridden, and then we'd get to the second district where it'd be good again. Makes no sense. We need to start thinking as a city, not as six little individual countries. And that's part of the problem with the original gaming ordinance, in my opinion.
And just to reiterate on that, another issue that was brought up are these shared streets, like one hundred and sixty-seventh street that Councilman Tyler and I have talked about where previously I couldn't get nowhere with it. It would totally be prioritized by the board, and in a public setting, they would make their decisions. We, like you said, we'd have three, you have three, and then the city engineer, and, go ahead.
One more point. Right now, in the original gaming ordinance, if you're an at-large council person, Councilwoman Katrina, Councilwoman Vanez, Councilman Spitali, in the original ordinance that was written up, you don't matter when it comes to gaming revenue. And that's not right either. For at-larges, we're like second-class councilmen for the last twenty-four years. And quite frankly, I think the original intent of an at-large councilman was basically like a mayor. You represent the whole city, but in Hammond, you get treated like a second-class citizen. Like, no, the districts are the action. We get the money, screw you, at-large councilman. This is not right, how we do business. The at-large councilman should be treated with more respect. This board gives them the ability to sit on a board that's going to spend fifteen, sixteen million dollars a year, and you will have input if you're an at-large councilman. You don't have that right now, and you know it as well as I do. I'm not telling you anything you don't know, but I think a lot of the public would be shocked that Councilwoman Vanez has been on the Hammond City Council a long time, hasn't had a penny's worth of input into how a single dollar has been spent in City Hammond with gaming revenue. Right, Councilwoman Vanez?
Yes, sir.
Is there any further questions during this? Councilman Tyler.
Uh, I'm a fan of the ordinance, and, and that's initially why I sponsored it. The, the reason that I did want us to maybe slow down is because one of the things that I've brought up, um, after receiving this last week was, uh, the need to create a rubric so that we understand how the decisions are being prioritized by this group, um, whether that be something that is just the engineering department that's being held to, or just the way that the entire group is, is able to review the different projects that are brought to them, either by us city councilpeople or by residents. I just want to make sure that we have something in place to make sure that the money is spent equitably, um, and we all understand the way that these projects will be prioritized so that we don't find ourselves in a questionable situation in the future. So I would just want that rubric, hopefully, to be created before we actually.
Thank you.
Once this committee, but then maybe be ratified once that committee, once the, once the improvement board, uh, is created so they can get input too. But I know the engineering department has ideas already about how to prioritize these projects, so maybe that's something that we can start working on.
I understand, Councilman Tyler, it was, how soon would we create this board if, after it was ratified? Would we wait till twenty twenty-one, or would we do it immediately?
If the, if this is passed by the council, I would have the capital improvements board meeting immediately, in twenty twenty. They can't spend any money because there's nothing there, but they could start getting ready for twenty They can't spend any money, because there's none there, but they could start getting ready for 2021, and think we're all hoping and assuming that 2021 is going to be a normal year, where we're actually doing capital projects again. And our revenue sources are coming in, and, you know, I hope that's the case, we all hope that's the case. But if it's not, then the capital improvement board is going to be doing what we're doing now, spinning their wheels.
Was that your question, Councilman Tyler?
In a sense, I mean, I understand, because the mayor and I, like you said, we've had this conversation about when it would start to meet. But before they start making the decisions, then I would like for this rubric to be set. And I would think that we, as a council as a whole, will want input on that rubric, not just the three of us that will be sitting on the capital improvement board. So I think that was my ultimate rationale for wanting to create that rubric now, before the board is set, so that we all have the input about how those projects are being prioritized. Since we do have a say in how the money is spent, actually, it's somewhat continued with the creation of this capital improvement board.
That would be a non-standing committee that we could all decide upon, you know. We got, we just got it in committee, so, I mean, we could, that could, that's, that is something we can all discuss too, in the committee hearing. And who would be the appointees on that committee? Is there any further questions from the mayor?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler. I'm sorry, Councilman Torres.
They both start with a T, so.
That's, I was just going to say that.
Okay, this sounded like it could work. I'm a councilman that feels that in the past, Second District has been highly neglected for a lot of projects. And if this is done fairly, where projects are done, where you distribute them throughout the city, then I can see it work. But for the past, until recently, because Second District is building up slowly, and there's more projects underway, so. If it's done fairly, and I suspected well with the appointees, everybody's going to appoint, then I could support something like this, because, yes, I might believe we're lacking in the city a bit in infrastructure, and we have to catch up on it, a lot of the main streets, we need to catch up on. So, in addition, the figures that you're going to give, Councilman, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
The figures you're going to give, Councilman Kowinski, we're all going to get them?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just to reiterate on what Councilman Torres said, that was one of the reasons why I was in such support of this, is I saw Truman Street the day after it flooded, and had I had my way, my gaming money would have went for lights. I'm sorry, not Truman Street, Sherman Street. And I sat there thinking, why am I putting lights on a street when just because someone doesn't live in my district, they have to suffer, and I have to witness what I witnessed on Sherman Street that day? And this board is a good start towards it.
Yes, sir. And Councilman Torres, all the district councilmen, I'm the mayor of the whole city, it's important to me to make sure all corners are touched. I think I've done a good job in every district, some better than others. And I agree, Councilman, in the Second District, we need more work in that district than other districts. And I think the city engineer recognizes that also, and that's not your fault. I think that we had a lag some years back in the Second District, I think we all know what I'm talking about, but I agree with you, sir. And, you know, we're a city, this is one city, so. And my appointees, the people I would appoint, I imagine the council appoints three council members. I'm going to appoint three people that are like leaders in the city, and diversity is important. I want this board to be looking like the City Hammond looks. So I think diversity is important, expertise is important, obviously, the city engineer chairing it, that's going to help a lot.
Thank you.
And by the way, Councilman Tyler brought up an excellent point about grading and stuff like that, criteria to use to select products, I agree with that. And this ordinance, there's a lot of thought put into this ordinance, it's not, it's not the Bible, though, there's changes that can be made. But I want you to know, every line of this ordinance was gone over, by myself personally, by attorneys. A lot of thought has been put into this, and if Councilman Tyler's uncomfortable with the criteria we use to select projects, I would just ask for him to work with the administration, so that we can come up with language that's acceptable to the council and the mayor. Because I'd hate to see it pass the council, and then I can't sign it, because there's something that we didn't anticipate. That's all I ask, Councilman Tyler.
Is there any further questions? Was that Councilman Emerson?
Yes, I agree with Councilman Tyler, I think the rubric and the design of the committee is really important. I think it's a good start, what's in the ordinance. But I think the fine-tuning of that, which I imagine the chairman, you know, chief engineer will have a great say-so on that, but I think the whole committee should, and I agree with him that the whole council should have some input to what that is. And I really don't know what it is at this point, but I think the attempt, to be fair, will be greatly appreciated by everyone.
Mr. President, going off of what Councilman Emerson just spoke about, Councilman Dave made a joke to me about a month ago about this. And that joke, I think, it was a joke, but I think it's also very real. First off, Councilman Dave doesn't want to be on the board, which I find interesting, I could understand why, though. It's a tough, difficult choices have to be made. You think 16 million's a lot of money, until you see how much need is in the city, and there's a lot more need than the money we have coming in. But Councilman Dave said, I'm going to go to every one of those meetings, and I'm going to walk in there and say, I need Schneider Avenue redone, and I'm going to be pounding on the lectern saying, finish Schneider Avenue, and then leaving. I think that's part of the role of a councilperson that's not on the board, is going in there, letting the board know what needs need to be done in their district, and, you know, leaving it up to your fellow councilpeople and the administration to work through the details. I see that, I think the council members, and the mayor, and the administration should come to that meeting, just like we go to Board of Public Works. This is an important board we're talking about here. It meets every other week, just like the council does, it consists of leaders of our government, and it spends millions of dollars every year. And the public has a chance to present their argument to it as well. And the minutes are going to be maintained by the city clerk, it's going to be just like a council meeting, every other week.
I don't want to imply that Councilman Tyler, this does, by no means, I'm using it as an example, but anybody that saw what I saw on Sherman Street, and what you witnessed, for me to say, well, that's not my district, I'd be heartless. I represent the Fifth District, but I've been a lifelong resident of Hammond. And you can ask city engineer Button, the next day I told him, forget what I was going to do. If we ever get gaming money back again, you need to tell me what's most important to be done in my district. Once price tags started getting attached to that, two blocks might take three years, the way we're doing it now. But anybody else have any further comment?
It does take three years.
What was that, Councilman Emerson?
It does take three years, as we talked about in Buren.
Mm-hmm, yes. Who has made, was it Councilwoman Alexander?
I am totally in agreeance, and I totally understand where Councilman Barry is coming from, that this is allotting for us to do more things in the city. As you guys have continuously said, it's taking you some projects, so if you have one term, and that project is going to take you until another term, it's never going to get done, because now a new person that comes in, their agenda is totally different. I think all of us on this council want to see what's best for our city, improving our city, especially for the areas that are forgotten. We have plenty of areas that are forgotten in our city, because either that councilman doesn't go over there, or they're friends with this person, and I really think that it's taken away from what's really going on now, and changing that, reinventing the wheel, changing the format, to say, you know what, we have areas in our city that direly need the help. If it's going to take $5,000 to improve it, it's not going to happen through one councilperson.
Thank you.
So I'm totally in agreeance with it, not so much about having to sit on something, or sit on another board, but just totally in agreeance with being able to make our city better in other areas that are forgotten.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
As I said earlier in the evening, this is an opportunity for our residents to come before the board and express their concerns about, it's always going to be about a street in their neighborhood, let's face it. But when it rains, and areas of Hesfield flood, those people have a legitimate complaint and concern. They should be able to come before this board, and the engineer will be able to explain to them. As I'm looking on the comments here on the screen, on Facebook, one woman said, her street always floods, not as bad as the other ones. Well, undoubtedly, the streets surrounding her neighborhood have not been done. So hers is still affected when we get the rains. Councilman Warple, you mentioned Sherman Street. To see, to witness what you saw that night is heartbreaking. And if we, as city officials, and residents of the City of Hammond, have an opportunity to address those concerns, and listen to the stories of the residents who come before this board, I think that for an at-large councilperson, I get calls from all over the city, don't get me wrong. But when it comes to infrastructure in a particular district, I have no control. I have no input as to the projects that are done in a particular district. And I get calls from residents saying they can't get in touch with their councilperson. The councilperson doesn't return the calls, probably because they know what the question is that is going to be asked. So this, we talked about transparency. I think this is a good opportunity for the residents to see what's going on as far as the projects in the city. It's a good opportunity for the city, particularly our engineer, because he knows all of the cost of everything, to say, okay, you want one street done, that costs a million dollars. But then this street over here is flooding, that costs another million dollars. How do we prioritize that? It's going to be by need, not by want. And I think that that is extremely important. So for those reasons, that's why I am in favor of this, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vines, and my final word on it is, is I heard you say, we all worry about our districts. Well, it kind of sucks when you've got a problem in your district, but the cause of it is in another district.
Right.
Mayor, did you want to say a final word?
One last thing, we keep talking about the capital improvement board, and that's understandable, because that's going to be where majority of the action takes place. But something I want to point out, that we've been doing since I walked into City Hall, is what we call the mayor's gaming advisory committee. The not-for-profits across the City Hammond have become reliant, so to speak, but it's a good program. We help out Hammond High School basketball team, we help out the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club, church programs, neighborhood groups. This, if Tom McDermott walked out of City Hall, and some other mayor took over and didn't support that committee, it's gone. It's not in city ordinance, it just goes away with me. So this proposal in our ordinance creates this under city ordinance. So it's not the mayor's gaming advisory committee anymore, it's the gaming advisory committee. And under this year's numbers, Councilman Mark, going back to a point you made earlier, 4% was right around $650,000. $700,000, right in that ballpark, so that's why 4% was chosen. That's why 4% was also chosen for the rainy day fund. Councilman Barry expressed interest in that, so did Councilman Mark, and we agreed, we think it's a good thing. City Controller has been talking about that for a number of years. We figured 4% going into there, 700 grand a year, over time, that builds up to be quite a bit, so.
It was five appointments on that board for the council?
Yes, sir, that's chaired by the chief of staff, mayor's chief of staff, five appointed by the mayor, five appointed by the council.
So the one board will have five, the other board will have three, that's perfect, that's eight, so everybody can have a.
Well, it doesn't have to be council members either, the gaming advisory committee, I'm going to put civilians on that.
Yeah, we've had civilians on it.
Yeah, I'll have civilians on that one, but I'll have, on the capital improvement board, it's going to be department leaders, like I imagine the city controller, like she needs another committee, like, you know, but I imagine either her, somebody in her office will be on there to talk about the finances, right? Of course, the city engineer is on there, so we got a lot to talk about.
Yeah.
I want to point out that this is a proposal, and I appreciate, and I know everybody's concerned, that's why we're asking so many questions, so. I'll be at the council hearing, I'll also be at the council third and final reading, can I answer any questions?
If there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Take a motion and adjourn.
That was.
We had public expression, no one had signed. Motion's been made, and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it.